Welcome to Conversations with Bob. Today I'm joined by Matt Crueth. Matt's the Chair of the North Hills Republican Committee here in Allegheny County, Pennsylvania. Hi, Matt.
Hey, Bob. How are you?
Right before we started recording, you mentioned that you agreed mostly with what I said, but when I was talking about kind of negatively on people who use the term Rhino, you wanted to be careful not to alienate people, you know, particularly some of the folks in your committee, but I think it's a valid point.
Yeah, it's, it's, what I said to you offline, too, was, you know, they are, they're workhorses. Some of these, and I say older, older guys or older committee members, because in our committee, that's what happens to be. But they're, they're out there knocking doors in our committee, making phone calls, helping us address envelopes. They have a deep knowledge of, you know, the township in the borough that make up the, the North Hills Republican Committee. They're well-connected. They know people. And you're exactly right. All the way up, everything that you said, I agreed with. And the only thing I was concerned about is I don't want to do to them what they kind of do to us with the Rhino term and, and, you know, make them feel like they, they're not welcome here. Because we have to find ways to get them all together. In, in our committee, like I said, they're, they're, they're out there killing it. And I don't want to lose them at all. So we, it's, it's a constant tug of war. Sometimes, sometimes it's a seesaw teeter totter, where you go back and forth with them. But we, at the end of the day, we're Republicans. We have core principle values. And this is where I always end. You know, do you, do you believe in individual liberties? Do you believe in lower taxes? You, you, we have to get to the fundamentals. And then we can, you know, parse the finer details out later.
I mean, I was sort of, I was critical of people that had a purity test, or thou shalt never take these positions or say these things, that sort of thing. And I certainly don't want to be an alternate, you know, purity test. So like, if you say the word Rhino, and it's really not about whether people say it. It's just, to me, it's what you do with that. So, you know, if there's a primary going on, you, we get behind our candidate, you can call the other guy Rhino, whatever you want. But when the primary is over, and now we're into the general, and you're a committee person, you know, the attitude should be, I guess I'm voting for a Rhino.
I guess. You know? I'm bored. What am I going to do? Yeah. And that's where I don't want to lose them. Right? Because I got to figure out, like, as a Chair of Committee, like, how do you engage all of these people? And how do you kind of coalesce behind one candidate?
Right.
If that's the issue. And, and I think that, you know, on the whole, there's a lot of work to be done. Right? Because there are people that will just opt out on both sides, right? If, if you don't have a, you know, conservative enough candidate, or if they feel like they have a moderate enough candidate, it's not going to win, people will just start bailing left and right. We got to find a way to get everyone to, you know, come together and say, like, we're backing this person regardless of who's our candidate.
Yeah, it's not so much the word, so much for me is the, it seems effort to destroy. You know, it's like, yeah, we can disagree, and we can divide, and we can challenge, even maybe somebody takes, you know, is not happy with the results, so they walk away for that particular election. Even that's not like, okay, trying to recruit people to just create chaos in committees, which I've heard happens in some places, just disruptive, challenging everything. You know, because part of it to me is negativity seems to have a lot of energy behind it compared to positivity. I mean, if you want to bring a room negative, it, it happens in an instant almost. But go into a room of negative people and try to turn them positive. It's a lot more difficult.
Right. And so I think it's about looking at and figuring out where we can make those inroads. And then even if it's like a certain policy issue or a certain issue, that's a candidate, or excuse me, a committee member has, sitting down and talking and figuring out where we can have, you know, agreement.
I feel like what the Republicans in Congress did has been very good for Republicans. You know, the Durham probe, and the whistleblower hearings, and there's apparently some closed-door hearings going on, tax hearings investigating Hunter. So, you know, I think all this is good for the Republican Party. These were things that conservatives were very frustrated by, that nothing was getting done until Republicans take charge. I kind of drew this visual for myself to help understand it. So if you think in terms of like idealism, so values and principles and beliefs, that sort of thing, on one side, and then pragmatism on the other, you know, getting something done. So I'm a Christian. So it's all values. It's, you know, truth, God's truth with a big T. So you don't compromise that to try to get something done, because then you're sort of saying, I don't trust God, I'm going to do it my way, kind of a thing. If you apply that to conservatism, conservatism's an ideology. So you have a large component of that that's idealistic. And, but, you know, in some respects, you want to recruit more people and get your message out. So there's a little more of a pragmatic piece of it. Then you say, okay, we're going to elect Republicans. You know, I mean, you want to make changes in government, so you want to elect Republicans. Now you've really opened up a big piece of that. So you can't stay ideologically pure necessarily in a state like Pennsylvania, in a county like Allegheny, where Democrats outnumber us. You can't always expect to have the perfect pure candidate. You'll never win. So you need to have other people vote in order for your guy to win, no matter how right you are on principle.
Right. And we saw that with our, in our committee, with our school board elections here in North Hills. The same thing. We, we kind of parse out all the data. And when, and it didn't happen in a lot of other places, but you, we had candidates, Republican candidates that had Democrats voting for them, a high percentage of them.
Right.
Right. It's about a message, right? And you're not going to, like you said, we, we live in a very blue, I want to say purple area, but I'm not even that confident anymore. And, and I'm not saying that your core fundamental values change. You always have that underlying and underpinning kind of, again, you know, we believe in small government, we believe in lower taxes, that, that kind of ideology. You have that underpinning. But then where does your policy go from, from there? And it's not always going to look the exact same. And I think that that's reeling people in, too, and figuring out, like, we're in a position right now, we have, and I'll go back to our school board, currently, we have three conservatives on, three Republicans, I'll say, on our school board. And I would say their, their, their level of conservatism is all unaligned, right?
Okay, so there are three on there now, but they're not exactly aligned on every issue?
Not on every issue. And nor do I always expect them to be, right? But it's, it's, the reason I mentioned that was because we have three people right now. We're not going to get every policy that we want in place with, with three members. So where, is there any places that we can find agreement between two other Democratic candidate, or sorry, Democratic school board members? And if there is, what can we work out that, that, that starts to move the needle a bit, right? And so we talked about that in our committee. If, if, if there's this policy X policy that you want, and it's, you know, as far right as you can get, it's not happening.
Right.
It's, it's not. So you either get more Republicans elected, if that's the policy that you want, or you find a, a compromise where we say, hey, we can, we can move the needle a little bit this way.
Right.
And, and work with two other people on the board, right? And we're fortunate enough that we have other board members that, that aren't Republicans, that seem to, to at least want to work, you know, on a couple of issues with us. And it's great. Figure it out.
I hear people react harshly to anything remotely DEI. You know, if you put the DEI label on it, it's just bad, it's got to go. And I mean, if, but if you were to put yourself in the shoes of a board member, even if you had a majority, this stuff has been ingrained for a long, long time. It's supported at the State Department of Educational Level. You can't necessarily get rid of all DEI, no matter how many members you have on the board. But you can moderate it. Okay? You can make sure that it doesn't go out of control and, and establish principles, like kids are going to be treated fairly.
Right.
You know, it's not going to be this sort of reverse thing where you're going to, you know, treat kids differently because one has a perceived advantage. So you're going to give him a forced disadvantage, that kind of. So all the things that caused everyone to become concerned with DEI, you know, if you go back a few years, most average conservative family never really heard of it. Or if they did, they had no idea what it was. So, but some things have happened, some extreme examples of how it's been applied and used that caused them to turn against it and come out against it. Well, you can act against those things, but you can't necessarily guarantee you're going to get rid of everything labeled DEI.
Yeah, you're exactly right. And that goes back to exactly what I was saying before, right? And it doesn't even have to do with DEI. Any policy issue that you could bring other people, when you're in the minority, to, to agree with you on or push, that's great. But you're exactly right. This is a, a bigger issue than, you know, school board races.
Yep.
You're not, you may be able to change some policies locally, but at, at the end of the day, there are state policies that are still in place, like there's new state standards for teachers culturally responsive and sustainable patience, C R S E, I think they are. And there's federal that are coming down, right? So those are the things that aren't going to be fixed, even with a, a Republican majority on the school board, or either working with other, you know, school board members. This is not going to happen.
Yeah. And it's not even really a compromise. You know, when you do a budget, or some of the things we hear in the US Congress, there's a, I want something, so I'm going to give you, you know, sometimes it's just a matter of being able to articulate something in a way that they can't avoid it. So, you know, a lot of these far-left things, they frame it in feel-good language.
Yeah.
You know, so a, a, even a minority of conservatives on a school board can exert influence by how they present the issue.
Right.
You know, I'm not against DEI. You know, I'm not against helping disadvantaged people, but I'm, I'm also not against penalizing some kid for something that's not his fault whatsoever, that kind of thing. So fairness, we want to keep politics out. You know, I'm not against, you know, you have a gay, you know, whatever, a rainbow flag in this teacher's room, you know, that teacher can do what they want. But do we really want politics in the school? You know, what if, what if some other teacher wanted to bring some other type of politics that you might not like?
Right. Well, in any, I mean, just anything on that, that range of things, right? So we're either going to be accepting of everything. And at some districts, they've gotten it, right? There's that news out about the Satanist Club.
Ah, right.
Right? So we're either going to support everything under the sun, or, you know, kind of bring the, the, the things back to just educating kids and not so much activism.
You know, you know what's funny about the Satanists? Anytime I hear the Satanist interview, they go, well, we don't really believe in Satan. We're just poking the finger in the eye of the Christians. We're just mocking Christians. So then you want to bring that. So you're telling me you want to bring a club to the school, whose whole identity is about being anti some other group?
Somebody else. Right. I mean, if that's what it is, because I haven't followed it as much, but I, you know.
That's usually what they say.
But, yeah.
Oh, these people that we're not really, we don't really worship Satan. We're just all about personal choice and freedom. And, you know, we just use that kind of to mock Christians. So, okay, so now you're going to allow a club in the school, whose whole background, whose whole existence is about mocking another group?
Just, right. Just to hate another group, mock another group, or.
Where's your DEI in that?
Exactly.
Back to that negative positive thing. So I was really excited about what the Republicans in Congress had done, led by McCarthy, again, with the, the missile whistleblower hearing and the Durham probe, and the way the press brought it out, and they're now treating it seriously, like we have serious problems in the FBI. I think that's just been huge. Well, now, you know, he reached a compromise with Biden on the debt ceiling. So now there's a lot of negative energy to say, oh, well, you know, he's a Rhino, and he's terrible, and he's, so, you know, all that positivity, if people buy into the debt ceiling negativity, that's a lot of energy, and it's really hard to convince people that, well, maybe look at some of the good stuff. No, no.
It's a ton of negative energy. And you're right, it's pervasive. I mean, it's so much harder to swing the needle the other way. It's so easy to swing it from positive to negative. And it take, it's going to take an awful lot to swing, you know, the needle back the, the opposite way. And that's the frustrating part, too.
Yeah.
I don't know, it doesn't seem, you know, I'm not in the inner workings, obviously, on the Democratic side, especially nationally, obviously, but even locally. And I don't know if it, if it works that way, you know, in their committees. I see it. I see the, the progressives and kind of more moderates, that fracture in that division. But boy, they just seem to get behind whoever wins.
They do.
They just, you know, vote blue no matter who, right?
I mean, do you remember the early days of the Squad?
Yeah.
It seemed like every week, they were in the front of, in front of the cameras, calling out the Democrats.
Yep. Yep.
One day, that just disappeared.
It just stopped.
Yeah, Schumer and Pelosi got around them, and, you know, they got them to toe the line. So they may do it now behind closed doors, but the only time you hear AOC criticize anyone, it's a Republican.
It's a Republican. Yeah. It's, and they, again, they have a, a working that maybe we're missing, and we have to weird that out. Because the, the internal division that becomes external, where other people can see it, and other people notice, isn't doing us any favors, that's for sure.
And, I mean, sometimes things are negative. I'm not saying to pretend bad things aren't happening. But if you are a committee person, so you've committed to this cause, and, you know, just, I would suggest, just think through, if you're talking about something, you're complaining about something, what's the actionable thing here? You know, what are you trying to accomplish with this position that you have? This, you know, I mean, it's really easy to just come together and gripe. But if you say, okay, what, what are we, what are we really trying to accomplish is, is the things that I'm saying within the committee, the things that I'm doing, am I helping anything? I mean, what's the endgame here?
What is the endgame? And sometimes I don't think that they, they know. You know, when I, when I started going to our committee meetings, I guess maybe three years ago now, it was a few people in a room, and it wasn't, it was a lot of, it was a lot of griping. And I think there was a lot to gripe about. I mean, all of their points were valid, right? You, you sit into a meeting, and you're like, I agree with that. I agree with that. That's terrible.
Right.
I can sit there and agree with every single thing that they, they said. But at the end of the day, much like you said in your last conversation, you, you can't just come together every so often and gripe about things. If you're not willing to put boots on the ground and come up with a, a plan, and actually have some kind of actionable steps, you, you, you're going to be a failing committee. And, you know, and that, that's not, I don't think anyone wants that. I certainly don't want that of our committee. And it's, I think that we still have work to do. And I listened to your last conversation, and I said, you know, we've gone from griping to actionable discussion and mobilization. But I think we're still missing out in our committee, even on actionable next steps. Like, by this X time, let's have X done. And, and
Right.
Back together and see it through. We're very close, but I still think we have, definitely have work to do in that, in that regard. And, and again, it's, you're not going to be a functioning committee, a winning functioning committee, unless you're, you're devoted to that. And I think it comes down to, are people have to ask themselves that question when they get involved in a committee? Am I going to do that?
I dealt with this a lot in my job. So I was typically responsible for the technical teams, whether they're design engineering, or production and support. And so I would get in, and especially with the engineers. I mean, these are highly educated, creative people. Right? So you bring them together in a room, and I, it doesn't matter what you mean, why somebody has something to complain about. So there's typically, this is impossible to do, this guy did this, and, you know, we keep changing the specs, and we can't, and, you know, it's like, the energy in the room is, because I'm the senior guy, they're giving me all the problems to solve. And what I would usually do, I, I hear everyone out, and then I would throw it back. And I would say, okay, now what can we do about this? I hear you on this issue. You know, we're the technical folks here, right? I mean, we know what our role is. We're not going to go to accounting and ask them to design a product, you know, where their, their role is something different. So this is what our role is. How do we deal with this? How do we, you know, how do we accomplish what we got to accomplish in spite of certain problems? How do we solve other problems? I would just try to throw it back to them. And it was really mainly to flip that around to be, so that they don't feel like everything's impossible, to get them to start thinking, okay, what can I do? What can I do to make a difference? And I would always tell, if, if, if we have a legitimate change that we want to make in the organization, and it's going to help us, then I'll do everything I can to make that change happen. But we got to kind of take ownership for what our role is. And how do we, how do we accomplish that in spite of problems around us?
Right. And I think that goes back to leadership, too, right? Being in a leadership position, you have to kind of throw that back on people and say, like, you can't come to me for the answers. I can manage some situations and, and give you some advice and, and point you in the right direction. But, and that's what a leader does, but you also need to kind of, you're, you're, you're the workers, too. Like, I'm the worker. I'm going to be
That's right.
This as well. And we're going to fit, see it through and figure it out. And those are the actionables. And what would you do in this situation? And how can you turn it back on them?
I mean, the candidates, the voters, people are counting on us. Now, what didn't happen, say, in a group of engineer, is them to turn on each other.
Yeah.
There was almost never factions. It was always engineering against sales, or engineering against accounting, or engineering against the CEO. There was always, you know, some outside group causing our problem. It was, it was never within people pointing the finger at each other. So that, that's kind of unique to this.
I mean, yeah, I leave it to politics to find a way to, you know, have all these factions, right?
Not long ago, I got into some back and forth with some of the members of our group here in Shaler over your Facebook posts. And you and I talked about it. I actually thought it was very well-handled. You know, there were some negative things that the Democrats said about parents, you know, complaining about issues. And I think they even said some things, so, about your Republican committee.
Yeah.
Or your candidates.
Our candidates, and our committee, really. And, and both of which were, you know, unfounded. They really extrapolated a lot out of, you know, this situation. But, you know, it's amazing to me, especially being a teacher, right? I, I get, I get supporting teachers, obviously. I, I love having the support of, you know, school board members or parents or whatever. But when, when.
I like that, by the way, when they say, oh, they don't support teachers. I am a teacher, our chairman.
Yeah. So at the end of the day, what, what happened is, you know, they, 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 there was a little issue in our, one of our buildings that came to light at a school board member, a school board meeting. And they, they just hammered home and really berated the parent, and backed the teachers on that. And it's just funny to me, because the, the minute that that school board meeting was over, that next school, they already had, like, a little, you know, picture and logo made up. So you know that they had it done before. And it was, you know, we basically, we support teachers, not bullies, and inferring that the
Okay, right. They called the parents bullies.
The parents were bullies for coming to a meeting and, and talking about, and, and again, the, the ironic thing is, the parent even said, like, I've gone through the chain of commands. I talked to the teacher, I talked to the principal, I talked to the superintendent, or I emailed the superintendent, and now it's still happening. So, you know, I'm coming to the school board and, and, and doing that.
What was, what was the complaint about? What was the particular issue?
Uh, the, the issue was that there were gender ideology LGBTQ books on, on display, a teacher's classroom library, not being read in class. And they were just prominently displayed in, in the classroom. And it's the parent had, you know, vote, voiced concern about that a previous year. And I, I think she thought that it was, you know, a done deal, done and over with. And then it came to light throughout some social media posts and, just the school board posts and whatnot, or school district posts. And, yeah, so the, the, the parent came and spoke. And, you know, the next day, it was pretty much like, we support teachers, not bullies. And.
So it's interesting that the Democrats didn't go after the parent for the issue, to call them transphobe, or homophobic, or whatever that is. They didn't use that. They just called them bullies.
Yeah. And the issue was, and I, I think the bigger issue was, for them, that the, the teacher's name was mentioned in, during the school board meeting, which was permissible under, you know, policy, school board policy. They even talked about that at the next school board meeting. They said, was it okay that this happened? And they said, yes. Look, as a teacher, I mean, I wouldn't want in my name mentioned at a school board meeting, you know, because it just brings knowledge to it. But at the same time, like, if there's an issue, and you've gone through the chain of commands in the way, and, you know, this T, this parent is a, a parent, they're not a political activist, they're not involved in our committee, they don't have any, like, I didn't even know the parent before this had even happened. But it's, you know, and, and that's basically what happened. They, they, they attacked the parents, and then they all, they just kept on posting and posting and posting the attacks, the, the bullies, parents are bullies. And it really harkened back to, you know, weaponizing the DOJ and, you know,
Yeah.
Domestic terrorists and whatnot, for, you know, parents speaking at school board meetings. And I'm thinking, these people are running for school board, you're calling your constituents, your voters, bullies. I mean, any
Right.
That had the, the, the tenacity, the, you know, the, the feeling inside to, to actually want to speak at a school board meeting, I, I'd be like, I don't want to do that. Now I'm going to be called a bully. So.
Well, and, you know, the reason I, I pointed out that they didn't actually even comment on the issue of the books, is because I think they saw that as a loser. You know, they felt like, if they had, if they had to get in an argument with a parent about whether those books belonged in the school or not, they probably lose that one with the public. So they went after, these are anti-teacher bullies, they're attacking teachers.
If your whole, I don't know, three-minute speech is about books, and about what you found inappropriate as a parent, and I wasn't told, or I wasn't notified, and you mentioned the teacher by name once or twice, that, and your argument is then to respond back by, you're calling that person a bully and not talking about the, the actual issue? I think you're exactly right. I think it was a, they, they knew it was an issue that they weren't going to, most people would feel, third, by the way, it was a third, you know, eight, nine-year-olds. And they would have felt like maybe it was
Third grade, then.
Yeah, third grade. Not appropriate for school. Or.
Which, by the way, the DeSantis Parents Rights Bill, that they've allowed to be called the No See Gay Bill, stopped at third grade. It was kindergarten through third grade.
Yeah. Yeah. So it was, it was, it was an issue, you know, we, I felt like that was the first one. You know, they, just the fact that they called candidates bullies, but then they posted, or sorry, parents bullies, but then they posted on their, their Ross Township Democratic Committee page, that basically, the fact that, you know, we, or anybody, and I say, I shouldn't say we, because again, she wasn't part of our committee, or we didn't know her until that point, but somebody spoke out against this, that we, anybody that believed in this, were causing the suicide of, of teen, or of children. You know, and that we were, as a committee, or as candidates, calling people pedophiles and groomers, which is not an accurate depiction of anything that happened. And our committee never called anyone pedophiles or groomers. The candidates never called anyone pedophiles or groomers. So that was, to me, just a blatant lie. And I couldn't let it, you know, just go. So I felt really the need to kind of do a statement from our committee, and post it on our social, and post it in our email blast that we have many, many subscribers to. And we've gotten amazingly positive feedback from it. And the funny thing is, I think, and I think this is part of the tactic. I think that people are a lot, are afraid to be vocal about this issue. Some people are afraid to be vocal about this issue.
Right.
Because they're afraid of exactly what happened to our candidates and our committee. And I just had to put my foot down and say, you're not going to do this. You're not going to do it to our committee, you're not going to do it to our candidates, you're not going to do it to anybody that thinks it's inappropriate, because that's their opinion. And they're, 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 they're allowed to have that opinion.
Right.
So I think it's just a scare tactic.
Was your instinct immediately to respond to this on social media?
100%.
Or you wanted to do it?
100, oh, yeah, 100%. Nobody even, I saw it, it popped up on my, my, my feed. I, I saw it immediately. I, I don't even think I waited, I waited till my lunch, actually. And I, I typed it up. I sent it to two people and said, just give this a read. One of whom knew what it was about. The other one immediately called me and said, what the heck just happened? And I said, here's the backstory. So, and I think that's the, the other thing, right, Bob? That a lot of people don't know the backstory. So it's, it's, it's important to give people an understanding of what happened, and then why you're responding, and then your response to it. And that's hard to do in a succinct way.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that people are going to actually read. But I'll tell you, it, the, the response was resounding. I mean, we've gotten hundreds of emails, people joining our, our email list left and right, agreeing with us and saying, like, it's, it's just gone too far. It's just too much. So.
It was actually a gift, I think, to you guys. Because if you look at what they did, they took the they took the national narrative, the smear against, you know, these extremist Republicans. And they made those accusations against your candidates. And your candidates never said any of these things. Your candidates gave them no reason to make those accounts. So they kind of revealed themselves, if you will, as the ones that are biased and, you know, slanderous against your candidates.
I don't think that the national, um, headlines worked locally for them. And I think that they thought that it was going to. I think that they thought immediately that like, oh, this is gonna, this is gonna catch, it's gonna resonate. And, uh, it didn't. And I think you're right. I think it was a gift. I think many people saw, and it happened right before the election. I think many people saw it for exactly what it was. Um, and I think, and going back to the, you know, we had had that conversation before, a lot of our candidates, um, when you counted vote totals for the Democratic and Republican side, our candidates outperformed, um, their candidates and, and some of their candidates. That didn't happen in any other local election. And I'm a, I was a political science major. The, the minute those election results, even if they're, um, unofficial, I'm in there, I'm doing the exact same thing, you know, looking at all the data. There are no other local races in comparable districts, um, in the north that, um, did what we did, where there were, when you vote to, uh, totaled all the votes, that Republicans beat, uh, Democrats or vice versa, Democrats beat. It was all Democrats and then all Republicans or all Republicans and then all Democrats. So.
So see, on my end, when I saw the post, you know, Shaler Committee needs to call out people. You know, I went to the Democrat Facebook page and I, there was no basis to call anyone out. So if I, if we did, we would be doing what the Democrats did.
Yeah.
You know, we would be making baseless accusations against them that they could then respond and we would give them a gift. So they would get to, it showed that we're the, you know, troublemakers, the extremists and
Yeah, you're exactly right. This is, for us, this was not an October surprise. It was a late April, early May surprise. But, um, the, you can't, you can't dig and find, right? You can't start, start doing exactly what you can't say, we're gonna call them out. We're gonna do this. We're gonna do that. Unless you have actually something. It can't be a knockover, right? It has to be something.
In, in a, in a way, the stuff that we hear going on nationally, it's, it's almost like theoretical, right? There's, eh, eh, you know, something happened in California, something happened in Minnesota, and there's these incidents. But there are literally millions of teachers and, you know, I don't know, tens of thousands of schools. To the average voter, people not paying attention to all this stuff, you can't just take that and then apply it to every Democrat locally.
Nope. It doesn't work. And it makes you look foolish. And like, you were smart to say like, hey, we can't do this because it doesn't exist. And if we do, we're gonna look like the fools, right? It's gonna backfire on us. There's nothing to call out. So what are we calling out? Um, yeah, absolutely. And like I said, and that's why I started by saying there are
And we don't even have candidates. We, well, we have, we have one guy running for reelection, but he's a longtime, you know, moderate guy. So, you know, it's not necessarily gonna help him.
Yeah.
But, you know, we could go in and complain about all these problems if you want and attack these people. But then we're not even offering candidates to
You have to have a viable solution too. So that was like a twofold problem for you, right? There's, there's nothing to call out and you don't have any candidates that would even push, I shouldn't say push a different narrative, but be, you know, say the opposite to say like, hey, this isn't, you know, this is happening or this, you know, it is here, whatever. Um,
What, yeah. What platform are your school board candidates running? Now, are you gonna have like a committee sort of common platform? Or will they all be individual, do their own thing? And what kind of things will that be?
Yeah. So we ran, um, we ran all candidates, all five candidates ran individual races for the primary. And we thought that that was, um, for the candidates that we were running. Some of them were experienced, some of them were not, some of them were just, you know, new parents that just contacted us and said, how do I run for school board? Um, and that, that happened. Um, so we ran all of those candidates ran individually. And I, it, it worked for them, you know, in the, um, in the, in the, the primary. Um, our candidates were clear winners on the Republican side and they knew who they were voting for, is what it comes down to. So how we run in, um, in November, now that all five of our candidates make it onto the ballot is probably going to be the conversation that we have, um, within the next week or two. I told the candidates, uh, as a chair, I was like, you have two weeks to get your signs and, you know, wrap everything up. And then now is campaign finance for them, um, that's due, uh, ends on Monday. And I said, as soon as we're done with campaign finance, we have, you know, our, our next steps in our meeting. Um, so it, I, I think we'll, we'll, we'll have a clear, um, idea. It's, it's hard, you know? I, I always think, you know, I've ran two races and they, they're just, it's a state representative race and a commissioner's race. And it's just you, right? I'm responsible for everything I say. I'm responsible for everything I put out. I'm responsible for everything I do. Um, when you run as a slate, what you say affects four other candidates, right? And what you do and what you put out affects other people. Um, and I think that we, we, not just we as North Hills Committee, all committees have to be careful of that and know the candidates that they're running. Um, talk to them, interview them, prep them, prepare them. And, and if you don't, I think it's going to be really hard to run as a slate. Luckily, we have great candidates. I think, um, just my two experiences running for election have, um, prepared me well to, um, assist the candidate. So, I mean, that's my, um, my goal for, for November.
You know, the negative campaigning is so powerful. It almost seems to me it's better not to run a slate. Cause you know, one person, one name on the slate, something really bad comes out or they say or do something really bad, it drags everybody else down. Where if they're separate.
Yeah. And it's everybody's level of com- um, comfortability is, is, is their, their level, right? Like, so people are like, they're, we have candidates that they, all they want to do is talk to people, campaign, post on social media, go to events. Um, we have other candidates that they have a very clear vision and mission, but they're not, um, posting as much on social media, right? They're like, I'd rather talk to people at events or knock on doors. So I think it all, it, 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 it different. It, it, there's a difference. And I think that if you could pick on strengths of certain people and say like, hey, these are the social media people. These are the people that are at events. These are the people that love knocking on doors and having one-to-one conversations with people. And you're a slate, you're, you're, you're combining all of that time. And the downside to not running as a slate, obviously, is you're campaigning for yourself when you could be campaigning for, you can get four other people's name out there as well, right? And we were so close. We, and this is what I keep on telling the candidates, we had a gift in, in April, May, like you said. But then we also had a gift because a lot of Democrats voted for our Republican candidates. And that's how we kind of beat out some of their Democrats. So we, we're looking at uh, people moving and being pushed out of their, um, current positions, incumbents. If the, if the numbers we have, um, you know, I think they're probably not happy with their numbers if I had to guess.
So are all five of your candidates, um, crossfired?
They were crossfired for the primary and all five of ours just went, run, uh, won on the Republican ticket. And then all five of the Democrat, well, there were six Democrats and five of the six Democrats won on the Democratic ticket only. So there'll be just Republicans running as Republicans and Democrats running as Democrats.
Which I think is better for the voters. I mean.
It's tough. There's, I mean, there are upsides and downsides to it. Um, you know, it, it, it's tough. And it's, eh, eh, we know now how political things have gotten, right? And school boards and whatnot. I mean, it's nice to think that they're not, um, same with judges, but.
I mean, I guess that was inevitable because both sides, you guys had a lot of candidates. So it was most likely you were gonna end up with Republicans winning and Democrats winning.
Yeah. I mean, there's always hope, right? That they were gonna like knock somebody else off the ballot, um, off their ballot. Uh, but then there's also fear that one of them is gonna knock one of ours off the ballot. But there is a clear divide. I mean, you could see. You knew who they were voting for. Um, but when you, you know, yeah.
So what do you, what's your thoughts, you know, on a, on a winning platform for one of your school? Is it the person, their qualifications, you know, I'm the best man for the job kind of thing? Or are there issues, financial issues, social issues? I mean.
Gosh, I think that a winning, I think a winning message is your, um, focus on academics, um, excelling, your responsibility to the taxpayer. Because I, I fully believe that there are a vast majority of people with some of the social issues that are out there that have a, just say like, I don't care what, how you raise your children. I don't care what you do on your own time. I don't care about that. But just don't talk to my children about it, right? I believe that there are a ton of people that fall into that category. And then I also know that there are a ton of people that want taxpayer responsibility because they're not having, they don't have any kids in the school. Their kids are, they either have no kids. They, uh, they're, they're senior citizens, right? But they're paying school district taxes. So they don't want a new $4 million baseball field, which is the next thing that the Democrats in Ross Township or in, in North Hill School District are gonna be asking for. Um, you know, I don't want a $4 million ball, ball stadium, right? That's, that, that makes my taxes go up. Um, so I think that that is, you know,
You could point to Shaler. Tonight, tonight they're voting on a tax increase, which I can, almost guarantee it'll pass.
Yeah.
I don't, I wouldn't say they're all, eh, you know, not everybody's gonna vote for it, but, um, I learned some things I didn't know. The, the, I forget the act, but there's an act in Pennsylvania, uh, rela- it's related to the casino revenues. And basically they have a metric that they say how much authority a school board has or how much the school board can raise taxes. Okay. And each year that is updated. So this year it's about 5%. So that means the school board alone can vote with their own authority to raise property taxes 5%, which is on the slate for, for, they're, they're gonna vote on it tonight. But if you look at the budget, back two years ago, they had about $9 million in the reserve fund. They used almost half of it last year and they're gonna consume the next half this year. So if you're running the numbers, just rough numbers, they need about a 15% increase in property taxes to cover the shortfall. And from what we're seeing, there haven't been any severe, you know, serious efforts made to reduce costs. So we're in Shaler looking at probably a 5% increase thereabouts for the next three years.
And that's, and that's what I'm saying. At what point do you say, let's look at our, but, cause there are, again, as a teacher, I know your, your healthcare costs are going up, your pension costs are going up. There's very little that school boards can do about that. Because that's a state issue, right? But there are millions of things that you can look at within your own budget to say, do we need to spend to this extent? Do we need this? Do we need that? Do we need the next thing, right? So this, and, and, and I don't know how it works in, in, in Shaler, what your board's like, but, um, we're in the middle of a renovation project, a sorely needed renovation project for one of our elementary schools. Um, it's $37 million that they have a bond for. Um, and then you would think that that would kind of be enough at this point to, to, to do. And now it's like, let's push the envelope a little bit. We have, you know, we can turf a field or that's what it started out with. We just want to turf this field. And then their last presentation was, um, bathrooms, concession stands, bleachers, uh, fencing, lighting, um, turf, like it just kept on going and repositioning the field. I'm like, wow, this is, this is a lot, right? At what point do we, not even cut spending, because I keep on saying, this is what I said to our candidates, going back to your original questions of messaging. There are, anybody can spend money. Anybody can spend it. Few people can save money and even fewer people could slash spending, right? And that, you need to find those people that could either save money or cut spending. And I, at some point you gotta get there. Because I, I could find any person that could spend any other, anybody else's money off the street. I could pull anybody off the street and say, sit here, spend these taxpayers' money. And anybody would do it. And they wouldn't have a problem doing it. So that's the winning message, I think, um, getting back to the original question. And, um, but I think it goes back to experience. You need all types. You need people that have kids out of school, candidates that have kids out of schools. We have, um, small business owners. We have people with, um, parent, uh, kids in school. Um, you need all types, young, old, male, women, uh, male, men, female, um, all types of candidates. Because that's when you kind of get the, the good diversity of thought that you actually want, like,
Right, right.
You're not beholden to like, I have a kid in school, every nine school board members have a kid in school and we have a axe to grind with this, or we want this, you know, project.
Right.
You need somebody that doesn't have a kid in school and say like, hey, we, do we need that? Do we need all of that? Can we
Right.
contain this?
Well, you know, the frustrating thing for me is I, I've been to some board meetings and followed some of this, you know, a bit. But looking at the numbers and the budget this time, this was predictable. They knew that this was gonna happen. Anybody with, with just a little bit of budgeting, even personal budgeting, could have looked at these numbers and said, you're gonna raise school taxes. Meanwhile, along the way, they approved a new press box in the stadium. When actually, I guess Shaler is one of the only schools that has two. We have one on the Division side and the, you know, and I, you know, how much of a press box do you need? It's, you know, it's students up there saying You know, we don't have the Pittsburgh Press and everybody or PG coming down and it just showed my age.
Yeah.
But then, you know, they, they approved, there was a, some conflict on the board about a big paving project that they did. You know, one of our Republican board members was shocked at the price and he tried to push back on it. I think he even called some contractors himself and, you know, they weren't happy with him for making waves and not going along. Yeah, but it, it ended up spending, I mean, a big number. I can't remember what it is. And, um, I mean, there was some dispute, some, uh, attendee, a public attendee was complaining about a large expenditure for flooring in the administrative office. Now, I don't know how bad the flooring was in the admin offices, but as I was hearing these arguments along the way, no one ever said, you realize we're way over budget. Our spending's way, you know, I just assumed, eh, you know, 50,000 here, 600,000 there. If it's all in the budget, it's all covered, you know? But it turns out it wasn't.
Not, right.
It's not.
And I don't thi- and I think that's where they think that they're going to get people or fool people or pull the wool over people's eyes. It's just say like, oh, yeah, 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 it's good. We're good. We're good. And then you start seeing like tax increases and you're like, wait a minute. Now, we avoided a tax increase. Our, um, um, financial guy suggested a, a small one. Um, and the board, um, looks like they're not going to, to bite on that, um, this time around. Is what kind of conventional wisdom is. But we'll see whether that happens. Um, it makes a difference because there's an election year and because there are candidates running against the, the incumbents, right? And they have incumbents up a lot more than we do. We only have one. So.
I mean, this would be a perfect year for Republicans in Shaler if, if we had some people in the pipeline to run.
We gotta get some between now and, uh, November, right?
And we do.
Yeah.
We do. We can run independents.
Yeah.
So the, the, the other part of this, in case it was missed, is so they, the board has authorization to raise 5%, which is nowhere near enough to cover what they're gonna need going forward. In order to raise more than that, they would have to take a vote. They'd have to get some special permission from the Board of Education or they'd have to put it on the ballot and have the public vote on it.
Yeah.
They're not gonna do that because that guarantees all the voters know that they're raising taxes. Now, they're just kind of doing it on the slide, you know? They're hoping it's gonna be, uh, death by three cuts. You know, a little cut this year, a little cut next year and a little, and nah, maybe they won't notice their taxes going up a little bit.
Right. And I think that's what they're thinking, right? Uh, I, that's, I would be my ge- best guess. Um, and it's, it's, it's a shame how, you know, unattended hours are. I would, I don't, I don't know if yours are as well, but you
Yeah. There's a few people that go regularly.
Unless you get like a hot button issue that people are well aware of. I mean, you're, you're talking about five or six people in the audience and, you know, I'm sure a couple of people online, um, watching. And I'm sure people watch afterwards too, after the fact, but m- most of the time that's too late if you're interested in anything. But it's so hard. You can't educate, um, you know, voters. Like, if that's your role, if you're going around trying to educate voters, um, then it's, that's your only role. Um, it's, it's not going to necessarily be the winning part. Um, there's a little bit of education, but a lot more of what your plan is. Okay? So, hey, did you know that they were putting, putting in a fault, $4 million ball, ball field? I think that's too much. Um, I don't think that we should be, you should be footing the bill for that, you know? That your taxes are gonna go up and see where the voters are on that. Um, so.
All right, last thing.
Yeah.
We're getting long, but you said you received a bunch of emails after, after this thing broke, um, 100. So do you have a process in place, like for people that would come to a meeting to sort of greet them and make sure that they feel, I don't know, that they're, cause just to show up at a meeting and maybe not know what's going on, not have all the history. Have you thought about a process where someone greets them and talks to them?
We actually do. We have like a little visitors form that you just fill out, like what are the issues that you're concerned with? Your name, address, da, 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 what are the issues you're concerned about? But you know, I think about this on a regular basis. Um, coming to a meeting and what our meetings are like for somebody that is very, um, tangentially involved in politics. And I think that sometimes they're very scary for people or it puts people off. Um, because we are in that like, couple, 5% or 3% of people that are like super involved in politics and know everything about everything locally, politics, right? And they're And there, most of the people don't. And some people just came to our meeting after that little issue that we had, um, with the gender ideology stuff in, in classrooms. They came to our meeting and I was like, we can't scare these people off with these like, you know, heavy topics and talking about like, even somebody when I was, when I was speaking at the meeting, like raised their hand and I'm like, what? And he was like, hey, you use like two acronyms and there might be some people in the room that have no idea what you're talking about. So you, yeah, like, you know, but yeah, we have, uh, we have somebody, one of our, uh, secretaries, recorded secretary. Always, any of the new people that, that he sees, um, we asked any of the new people like, hey, we know who comes on a regular basis. But we had this influx of people. And like I said from the beginning, when we were talking about this earlier, we had like eight or nine people three years ago. And we're pushing forty-five, fifty people at some of these meetings. And that was one of the meetings after that happened and we got all of these new people on our emailing list and we started pushing emails out more frequently. And, um, we started seeing more and more people come and we're now in the process of, A, calling them or emailing them and saying, wh- what, what is your level of commitment? Like what do you want to see happen? And how do you, how can we make sure that you come back and that you stay involved and it wasn't just a one-off? Because that's ultimately what we want is more.
Okay. Um, I mean, you wouldn't just ask, huh, what's your level of commitment? Uh, you know, that.
Say it again.
You'd be a little more creative in how you ask that.
Yeah, yeah, I know. You to this God, no. Um, but you know, some people, they're like, I, going back to it, and I, I say that because some people's level of commitment is, you don't know what it is until you start giving them, hey, we need this, this, this and this.
Right.
And this is what we're looking for. Are you able to, to help us out? Or do you just wanna come to a meeting and just listen and talk to people and, and that's fine. I don't care. I, I would love it if you came every single month and you just absorbed some information.
I agree.
Talk to your friends about it when you went home. And if that's your level of commitment, that's fine. Do it every month. We love.
I mean, it's tough to take somebody off the street. They have no, nothing invested in this whatsoever. And suddenly they just wanna do everything, you know, all they, get involved and do all the work.
Correct.
You know, it's like, hey, if you wanna just show up and be, you know, part of it, that's helpful too. Just being here, it's more attractive. And, you know, the more they're there, the more they get, kinda feel like they were part of it, they may start getting involved.
Right.
You know, doing, yeah, although I worried, you said you worried about scaring them off. I worried about boring them off. So, you know, if somebody comes in and they've got the hot button issues in mind and they come to a meeting and we don't get into the hot button issues, I wonder, oh, are they just gonna?
So one of, one of the things, and I don't know whether it's good or bad, but it's, it's the teacher in me, right? So we, I run our meetings so that there is like, I, I, we have an agenda. And I'll give like whatever the topic is, like a local issue, a state issue, a school board issue, you know, township issue. And I run off like my list and, and then when I'm done with it, it's like open comment, right? So sometimes we'll sit there for like another twenty minutes and people will just start like raising their hand. And that's what happened. It was like the school board issue. We got to school board issues. We were talking about like taxes and we were talking about the renovation. Where's that? And how's that going and so on and so forth? And then I was done and they're like, what about this? What about this? What about that? And we, you know, we just let people talk and that meaning that forever, we, we start, we usually go from seven until like eight, fifteen-ish. And then people mingle afterwards. I mean, we were pushing nine o'clock and we were still like talking. And people loved it. And I told them, I stopped it and I was like, hey, if you have somewhere to go, if you have kids, like if you need to get out of here, go, no one's gonna be offended. But like, if you wanna stick around and talk, like, this is the, this is where we're doing it.
Okay, yeah. So the free form stuff at the end, cool.
Right. Yeah. So it's great. And I love getting people involved and seeing people involved. And we have hardcore people that, that's what they love to do. And we gotta, we gotta work on their, what they love, their strengths. Um, we have people that that's all they do is go out and they just talk to people. I'm not as good at that, believe it or not. Um, convincing people to come. I am the person that like, once they're there, I will hound you until like, uh, whatever you want. Like you do that, you're, you're interested in this? Yep. Here, here's the next list of things you can do. You wanna do that? We wanna talk about this? Call me, I'll meet you, get coffee, we'll do whatever. We have like three people that, like they'll just like start calling people, hey, you haven't come to a meeting for a while. Yeah, I haven't seen you. Hey, we're best friends. You, you are, you're a Republican, come to our meeting, do this. I don't do that as much, but, um, once they're there, I'm the, I'm the hound.
Hey, I really appreciate it. It's been like an hour.
I appreciate it. And thank you. I, I miss Sherry. Um, I, I love her insight on, on this. So next time, um, make sure she's here as well. I mean, you're not, you're not bad or anything. I'm not complaining.
We're doing, but, yeah, I've been doing, mixing it in. Her and I went on for about an hour and twenty minutes earlier this morning. So I've got a lot of editing to do.
Oh, gosh. All right, Bob. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.